Thank you, Mr. White. Welcome, everybody who may be watching. This is an extra early meeting of the Wareham School Committee. We're meeting about a half an hour before normal just for the purposes of distributing the superintendent evaluation documents to the members of the school committee. Originally, I had intended to send them to everybody, the school committee and the superintendent, on Tuesday. But having attended the Massachusetts Association for School Committees Conference down in Hyannis, we learned, Ms. Bakayok and I were in some of these seminars, and we learned that that's no longer allowed. There's a court case that was recently decided that said that to do that would constitute a deliberation between a quorum, you know, because we were literally, you know, expressing our views in great detail amongst each other and not at a meeting. I see the point, but it's really not workable. One workaround in the future is possible to just meet like this, like a week before our meeting, and just distribute documents and then go home, and that would be okay, you know. But we didn't have enough to meet, we just learned about this. So, thank you for everybody's patience and flexibility. And with that, I'm going to just distribute these documents, and we're going to adjourn. But we can't, don't discuss them amongst yourselves because we won't be in session anymore. Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry. Let me know sooner. So, yes, the meeting is, this meeting is being recorded. There's no one here, and that's fine. It's being recorded by WCTV. And Ms. Ruiz, are you making a copy as well?
Yes.
An audio copy, yeah. And so with that, all right, I'm going to, so these packets contain four members. By the way, Ms. Spear couldn't make it with us tonight. She gave me some long notice, it was like about a week or so ago, that she let me know she couldn't make it to this meeting. But she also did not submit her evaluation until today, until literally hours ago. So there's four evaluations in here, and I have a summary of the scores and such, but it does not reflect Ms. Spear's numbers. If you do the math, you can check out the average, because obviously, the average will change. But the outcome is essentially the same, I believe. So, I'm going to pass these, and separately, I'm going to give you what she had sent, too. It wasn't, it's essentially a score, you know, with not much else. But I'll elaborate on that later when we actually do the evaluation agenda item. So this one's Dr. Shaverhood. Yeah. This one's from Michelle, just like for the record, you know. Mary Joyce April. Myself. I've got Lori's here. Now, like I said, separately, this is, this is, this is the evaluation I received from Ms. Spear. It's, I'm not going to discuss it, but this is all I've got. All right, so I'll just, there you go. There you go.
Michelle.
Yep. And did she have one? Yep, and if you want, it's up to you. Do you need more? Oh, yeah.
No, Michelle has one. Yep. We're good.
All right, so that, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I just was wondering if the superintendent had received this prior to tonight.
No, and I had made arrangements with her. I wanted to do that. And then this got dumped on us, and then it would, it could have come down to the point where I would have given the superintendent, you know, all of these, and that would have been legal. I could have done that. I could have given her all of these evaluations, but then the school committee would have been in the dark. And I served the school committee, and that wouldn't have been right. And I discussed that with her, and I hate it, because she had asked before if I would share it with her before, you know, the meeting, and I gave it some thought, and I didn't see any reason why not to. So I was like, I was great with, I was fine with that, but it turned out we couldn't do that.
Okay. I just would have hoped out of professional courtesy that she would have gotten this ahead of time. It's my understanding that when an educator is evaluated, their evaluation isn't even signed by the evaluator until the person being evaluated.
Yeah. And this was, this was the closest compromise I could make, I mean, just so that we'd all get it at once with at least, you know, some kind, sometime, you know, but there's the short notice.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
When I first arrived in Wareham, the evaluation system was fairly new from the Department of Education, and it was rough. There was a lot of bad things going on, you know, sort of the gotcha moments. People were, you know, rather than doing it as a way to helpful, to be helpful and to build around, there was a culture here that was hurtful to the people that were working. And one of the ways that we started to fix that was by looking at what was required, right? We have a system, it needs to be at a certain timelines, it follow a contract, and there's a sign document, the evaluation, the final evaluation every year. There's a formative and a summative that's given to the teacher. The evaluators used to sign it, and once you sign it, you can't change it, or you can't do anything with it. And so, we changed the language in the contract on purpose as a way to start to formulate these relationships between evaluators and teachers so that everybody could grow in a positive direction. And I have to say that it's made a huge impact and a difference in the professional dignity and the way that people actually converse, and with a motive of serving our people in the best way that we can. So, it's how we practice business here in Wareham, as far as evaluation is concerned. So I just thought it might be important to share that.
No, and that's great. And likewise, in my personal, you know, professional life, that's kind of how it is where I work, you know, and but, and I'd love to discuss this, and we will later, you know, but I just, I wanted to get this to you guys now, because if I dropped it on you all at seven, you're going to be rifling through it through the whole meeting, trying to, you know, read it, read up on it, we've got some real agenda items to take care of first. So please, you know, read it, and please don't let it be a distraction when we start back up at seven. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Do not discuss this.
I just need to sign.
Thank you, Mr. White. Welcome, everybody, to the November 14th meeting of the school committee, Wareham School Committee. As usual, WCTV is recording this, as well as Ms. Ruiz. She's making an audio recording. Is there anyone else in the room making a recording? Seeing none, just, you just have to notify the chair, that's all. And with that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And with that, is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. Moving on to good news. Does anyone have good news? Ms. Rossi.
Oh, in light of about five minutes ago, the Vikings won 14-7 over Southeastern Vocational School, and it was our last regular season football game of the season. They had senior night where they honored all of the senior football players, and the next game will be Thanksgiving Day at 10:00 a.m. against Bourne.
Anyone else? Oh, Dr. Schwam.
I just want to announce that Aislinn Weintraub won Teacher of the Month from Wareham High School. She's the co-op teacher on 99.9 radio. I guess they nominate, or have nominations every month from teachers from the South Coast. And she won. So, she was contacted by the radio station, there's a recording online. It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's great.
That's awesome.
Ms. Bakayok.
Yes, I had that on my list of good news, too. If you listen to the recording, I'm pretty sure she was nominated by a student, which is, makes it even special.
A lot of people, but yes, students were awesome.
Yeah, yeah, so that was really nice. I also wanted to say thank you to the voters who came out of town meeting. I believe that's been since our last meeting.
Yes.
And supported, there were a couple of articles in support of the schools, so I just wanted to say thank you to the voters who came out that night for that. I wanted to say congratulations to all of the fall sports teams at the high school, and note that the field hockey team moved on into the tournament. They went a couple of games into the tournament, which is really exciting for them, so congratulations to them. And also, it was really exciting to visit Deacon's last week. I know we visited one day with Mike, and then we went back for the Veterans Day ceremony. So thank you for putting that on. It was really, really nice, and I'm really glad that we were able to go. So thank you. And I think that's it.
Anyone else? So, I've got some. So, the last time we met was, as a regular meeting, was October 17th, and then we met again November 5th for the all-day workshop. But that's a long time in between regular school committee meetings, and a lot happened, so I got a lot of good news. All right, so as Ms. Bakayok mentioned, we did, we toured the Deacon's Elementary School. And wow, that was, I always liked going there, I always liked touring that school especially. And right off the bat, we were early enough for the morning announcements, and Ms. Chandler had Noah Glenn, I don't, what grade was he?
Grade one.
Grade one. And he rattled off those morning announcements like a champ, like he'd done it forever. He was such a pro. He was so good. And he had such a clear voice, you know. Let's see, just when you toured that building, the energy is just like so contagious, you know, what's going on there and such. Just, we, we got snagged, Ms. Bakayok and I, into doing this, like, you know, this drum thing that they do where exercises the left and right parts of your brain, where you to go over, you know, you do the alphabet, but you do it to a rhythm with these drums.
Stayed awake all day at work that day.
Yeah, yeah. And the teachers, the one running it, and the one that brought the students in, did such a great job with it. We got to see the lettuce crops in the calf, and then come to find out, I'm sure this was mentioned when they, when they gave a presentation, but it slipped my mind, but they get three growings out of these things. They cut them down, and then they let them grow back again, and they get three crops out of them before they have to replace them. It's nutritious, and I guess everyone looks forward to it. Let's see, also, I also got a chance to tour the Minnetonka Forest Wing with Ms. Siemens. And again, so Ms. Siemens did the, did the morning, it was early enough for the morning announcements on that one, too, and Ms. Siemens did it, and I was in her office, and I'm like, okay, it's a pledge of allegiance, oh, there's literally tiny flag, okay, in her room, so I did the pledge of allegiance, and that, that was fun. And it's always, you know, when I was here there, like, Ms. Siemens and the students and all over throughout, you know, the rooms and stuff, they're always stressing being respectful, being kind. I really like to see that, you know, it's sincere, too. And I also toured the middle school with Skote and Ms. LaFavor, and what was that one? That's, so we, I always liked touring that one as well and stuff. It's a big school. One thing that kind of struck me is we popped into Ms. LaSource's room, and she was, she was just, you know, she was in mid lesson, and she was pulling all the kids, and she had something up on the screen, and I couldn't tell you what the answers were, but those kids knew it, and she was just like really into it, really, the kids were engaged, and she's like, you know, you're rocking it, you're rocking it, and she's like really getting into it, and I really, really, it really shows. So interesting, too, when I got to the gym, I always, it's just the old JBA, you know, dad and me, when you go to the gym, I always look up and look at the lights and see how many are out, and there were about four or five out. But that's because, they'll fix them, but it's always because it costs like $1,500 to rent the thing that gets you up there to change them, so they got to do them all at once, you know. But JBA, I think, is in process now, but if it is, I hope they get them fixed soon. But I just, you know, I like going on the tours, and I think the principals like it, too. Maybe not, I don't know. So, anyway, also, they had the, the PTA had an event at Stone Path Malt, where they, I think they, I heard they raised about $1,500, but that was a great time, there was cornhole in Jenga and a raffle, and it was a good turnout. Let's see, Mr. Palladino was there, a lot of middle school staff were there, Ms. Pont really did a great job with the raffle. Let's see, so, yeah, we attended the Veterans Day breakfast, that was great. I was glad I could make it. And Ms. Rossi, you'll be, you'll be happy to know that, I remember the last time when we were discussing like the Deacon's School and the names and all that stuff, that there should be a day that, you know, where you talk about why it's named that, and that's exactly what happened here, that Ms. Perola was there. And there was a video prepared that she had done, and there was, you got the history of John W. Deacon's. It was really something. Yeah, it was great. Oh, oh, and I don't see Mr. Palladino here, but the ROTC really looked sharp. They did a great job. Let's see.
They did a great job at town meeting also.
They did, but I was sitting like right next to them, and you could, you know, in town meeting, I'm way up there, but I was, I was like, they were just, their uniforms were so crisp, and they did everything so great. And the kids, the kids, they sang a song to a guitar, and there's some videos you could probably find, too. Let's see, the food was great. Let's see. I sat in, in the policy review, I was there just as a member of the public, I wasn't part of the committee, I just, I had time, I wanted to check it out, and I was happy to see that there was robust discussion going on. It went quite a ways until the building committee hooligans showed up and had to kick you out, but I was happy to, I was happy to see the robust deliberations there. So we had the mass conference, and that went a good, you know, I was there for like three days, maybe you guys were more or less, but I always liked going there, it's, I learned a lot, and some things like we had earlier today, it was, it was kind of, sometimes you don't want to know, but anyway. Essentially, that is our professional development, I think, you know, for a school committee member, that's really our professional development. Lastly, I, last night, attended the soccer banquet, and Mr. Wilga gave really heartfelt recognition of all the players. He did an extra good job. I've seen him like year after year, but he did, he was so good at recognizing everybody, and I had kind of a proud dad moment, too, you know, where he really, you know, recognized my son, and it was, it gave me goosebumps, you know, lumping my throat, you know, so that was, it kind of makes it all worth it, you know. So, that's it. That's all, that's all the good news I got.
Sure.
Yeah. All right. So, with that, any more good news?
I think you said it all.
All right. Onto the report of the student representative.
Yeah, so the Veterans Day lunch, I was going to talk about that, too. Key Club was also there. We were, we served lunch. Yeah, that was actually really fun, because like all of the people there, it was like a great turnout. And like you said, the JROTC, that was like really, really cool. So Susan Gifford was there. I didn't know that she lived locally. I think it's really cool, because we talk about her in my AP Gov class, and she's like a member of the Massachusetts House of Representatives, you probably know. I don't know, I just think that's really cool. Haunted Hallways, this was weeks ago, but we haven't met in like so long, but that was really cool. There was like 600 to 700 kids, I think, and then, plus like their parents and their grandparents, that's like over 1,000 people in the high school. I don't even know if 1,000 people go to the high school. So, that's like really crazy. I saw some of you guys there, saw you there. I just, I loved your costume, that was so fun. So, we already are talking about next year, so we already have like ideas that we're going to throw in. It's really awesome. And our high school's Key Club, more about Key Club. I always talk about Key Club. I love Key Club. We were selected by the philanthropy partners of Cape Cod as the outstanding youth organization throughout the Cape, which is like certainly an award well-deserved, and we were awarded a grant, which we're going to give to Turning Point. And I just think all of Cape Cod, that like, that's crazy, like our club, Wareham, so yeah, that's awesome. Yeah.
So, they had another Veterans Day breakfast at the high school?
No, no, I was talking about the same one you were.
I didn't see Susan Gifford there, really. Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome.
She gave a speech. I, am I hallucinating? No, she definitely was.
No.
No?
At Deacon's school?
No. Oh, okay. We're talking, sorry.
We were at the John W. Deacon's.
We're mixed up here. I'm talking about the onset VFW.
Oh, okay, all right.
Because you mentioned, you, you mentioned JROTC, so automatically thought it was the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, it's two different things. Okay.
I missed that, I was there after, yeah.
You looked so weird at you.
Oh, boy. Yeah, oh, and so you're with AP Gov, so will you be going on the State House trip, do you think?
Um, is that in?
Mr. Stanton mentioned that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll, we'll try to visit her office, if she's around.
Cool, that is really cool.
Yeah, oh, she's really good, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any more good news? All right, that was the, that was the report, sorry. But that's great news. All right. Onto the minutes of the meeting, October 17th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 400. Just want to thank Ms. Ruiz for doing such a great job, as always, on the minutes. And so, I mentioned this, I always forget, but I did mention this when we met earlier at 6:30, that I have to report that Ms. Spear is not with us tonight. She has work commitments that came up a long time ago, she gave me a lot of notice, and I apologize for not mentioning that earlier. Let's see, onto discussion of school field trips. Do we have? And you got my, oh, what's up, Ms. Morgan?
I just have a question. What's the difference between the two of them? Is it two different years?
For what?
For the field trips. I have two documents.
Oh, maybe, yeah, one of them, I asked for the last year's and the ones planned for this year.
One's, yes.
And you got, you got my note about, you know, just some questions to think about and stuff, right? Yeah.
So, when we look at field trips, when the schools, they want them to apply to the standards, to the curriculum, to provide students with opportunities that they may not have if they're, if they're not on a field trip. So what we did is, I put together a few pictures for you, and I have the principals here, if they would like to come up and share any thoughts, you're more than welcome to do so, and just add to it. We talked to the standards, and we provide students with cultural experiences, there's team-building activities, and looking for leadership.
Great artwork.
The, one of the things that we, the staff say, and our administrators say is, it allows students to explore places they might not ever have the opportunity to go. And we also learn more about the local sites, what's in our community, what resources do we have, and how do we access them. It's an opportunity for our students to shine. Experience new things. Try something new. There's learning involved, and it's fun. They get to explore, have new adventures, and learn in different settings. Not only do we have students going out, we also bring field trips in. And so, you'll see, there's the cranberry bog, we have a fire, or electric presentation in the bottom, and then they're out on trails. We certainly thank the PTA for the funding of the field trips, the teachers and staff for going on the field trips, and our students for making them fun and rewarding. So if you have questions, some of our administrators are here, I know they'll be very happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any thoughts? Ms. Bakayok.
How many requests for field trips are not, how many are denied? How many field trips, zero? Okay, so.
Is it, yeah.
So the answer to that question is zero.
Okay. Are most of your field trips repeat? So.
Yes. So, grade three typically will go to Plymouth Plantation every year. They like to do the Cape Cod Canal trip. Cape Cod Canal also comes into the school. Grade four does the make-piece cranberry bog, that's part of the community field trips the PTA likes to do. Also, grade three does the historical buildings in town as part of the community field trips. Well, Court Bay Estuary is another one that the fourth grade really likes to go to. Last year, they went to Zitierian. So, they have to agree as a grade level where they want to go, then they submit their request to PTA using grade-level funding to pay for the buses.
Okay, all right. Well, good for them for taking advantage of our surroundings, because I think a lot of times, we take it for granted. So, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Oh.
Did Nature's Classroom happen yet?
It's this week.
Oh, that's so exciting.
They come home tomorrow.
Oh, boy.
Oh, that's awesome. I just had so much fun, like that was years ago, but it was awesome.
Yeah, it's tough for parents, but we do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I think I'm the only parent that didn't have a hard time sending my son away for a week.
Well, we had a mole that would send us some pics, but it was a chaperone. What do they do when they go to the Zitierian? Like, what's going on there when they go?
They're watching a play, so they, many of the students have never been to a theater, they've never been to a play, they don't know about the different acts, intermission, and so forth, so it goes along with the standards as well. So they're watching something and learning at the same time.
Now, are any of these like subsidized, or do the kids have to pay the full price, or?
We try to get grants for them, or free.
Okay.
So, we try really hard not to charge parents, but I know at different schools, different, you know, venues, different field trips, it's, you can't always do that, but with the fundraising we do through PTA, we try not to charge families.
So, for example, the aquarium, did they even have to pay for that?
We did not have to pay for the students because it was a grant that they received, and then they allow you so many free chaperones to go.
Yeah, that's great.
Mm-hmm.
That's great. I don't, I don't think I see the new Bedford, well, it's probably a middle school, but the Bedford Whaling Museum, is that still a thing?
That was on last year.
Was it on there?
It is a thing. The middle school has gone in the past, we just haven't sent a group recently.
Yeah, I chaperoned one back when the fifth grade was in Deacon's, and it was, it was great, you know, it was, I'm glad I went. But I was just kind of, just kind of curious, are you guys comfortable, do you think this is like robust enough, or would like to see something different, something more, or?
Can I ask, just the difference between the sides, is one last year and?
Yes, one was last year's trips, and one was anticipated this year.
The shorter one is anticipated, so we were asked for anticipated this year.
Okay, so this isn't a complete, there could, there's going to be.
Correct. Oh, there's going to be more, yeah.
This is the complete, so.
We just can't, and a lot of times at the middle school, we're getting our students' opinions.
I just, my son went on one this past week, actually, with the art class from the high school, and they went over to, I don't even know if the name is the same, the Forest View Nursing Home, with the art class to do a mural on the wall in the nursing home, which I thought was a really great.
That's really cool.
You know, opportunity, one for the art students to be able to, you know, have a field trip that's pertaining to the class, but also as a part to give back to the community and to the seniors of our, of our town, too, which I think, I thought was great. So I, you know, having my son been in Wareham School since first grade, he's always enjoyed all of the field trips, and he still talks about the ones he did at Deacon's, he still talks about Nature's Classroom, the ones he did in middle school, and now that he's getting to enjoy them at the high school. So I love to see that the different variety of age level and grade level opportunities, and that taking them to a theater is huge. I love, and a lot of the kids, even kids that you never would have imagined would have enjoyed a play, always talk about them when they come back, so it's always a lot of great feedback. I hear from my friends' kids as well, how excited they were to go. So I can't say enough good things about a lot of the trips and things and programs, and having been on the PTA side of it, I definitely know there's a lot of, you know, you guys bringing your presentations to request the grade-level funding, everyone always Everyone always does a really, really great job of, you know, kinda getting the feedback and, you know, presenting really well to, to get the, the funding, to get that to happen. So it's great, great teamwork for everybody involved.
I guess, question to Dr. Schwam, are you, are you happy with this? Do you think it aligns kinda well with the curriculum, or supplements it well, or...
I do.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Acceptance of gift.
Yes. I would recommend the acceptance of one hundred and fifty dollars from Robie's Gas to the high school for student travel expenses in the work program.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second it.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to say thanks to Robie's, that's a great, great, um, great use of resources, and it's definitely needed for the kids, so I think that's awesome.
No, I, I agree. All right, um, thank you, Robie's. Uh, with that, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, passes four... Oh, okay, so, uh, one of the abstentions passes three zero one. Okay, weighting, weighing of superintendent goals, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So Ms. Morgan, um, reminded me after, after we had voted on the goals, that we didn't vote on the weights, and then she's right, and the weights, you know, uh, I, I, I see in the document, they, they're, basically, the goals were plugged into what the old weights, and I don't know if you guys are happy keeping those weights, or if you wanna change them. In the past, uh, in the past, I've seen some really robust discussion on just the weights. I mean, honestly, personally, I'm fine if they're just weighted equally, but, but if, whatever you guys wanna do.
Are we talking about the, the Wareham form?
Yeah, the, the so-called Wareham form. Yeah.
I have a question, are you going to be adopting the new evaluation form?
No.
From, coming from the state?
Oh, oh, that, we'll have to have a whole discussion on that, yeah, yeah. But, but, but for tonight's discussion, it's just gonna, it's just, um, the, the so-called Wareham form that has our, our, our goals on it.
But this would be for the coming year, not for the...
Right, well, the ones that we ju-, that we just voted on at the last meeting.
Right, okay.
Bless you.
Bless you.
So I have a question.
So...
On the, yeah, on the goals and objectives sheet, that's what I'm looking at. So going forward for the next one, we would put in the current goals and then decide where they're weighted? The vo-, the goals for the coming year?
What do you have there, 'cause they're almost all...
Well, this is, well, because this is someone's, I'm just looking at how it's weighted currently.
Yeah, so this is the form right now, they, for, for this upcoming year. So it has, I think Ms. Ruiz probably put the goals in there, and...
Yeah, and I just kept the weight, right, for you guys to decide.
I don't think I...
Yeah, 'cause it, that's, that's kinda like arbitrary, 'cause that's like for the old, the last year goals.
Right, that's why I'm asking, but I don't think I have that one. Is it in my packet on...
Well, that's right, you can see it right there.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not so much about the actual goal, it's about the student learning...
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna change the goals, you know, but we, we have to vote on a weight.
District improvement and community engagement, that's what we're weighting. We're not weighting the individual goals. We're weighting student learning goals has a weight of twelve.
Right, I, I see what you're saying now.
I don't see a reason to change them, I wouldn't...
Oh, you wanna keep it as is?
I would.
All right, I mean, is there, is that a motion?
Sure, I move to keep the weights as is.
Okay, uh, second?
I'll second it.
All right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, passes four zero zero. Good, thank you.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'm not sure when the right time to ask this is, I guess it's now, because we're talking about next year's evaluation.
Yeah.
So, um, like Dr. Shaverhood asked, there is a new, there is a new, I mean, it's not totally new, it's just a little bit different than the way it is now, there's a different rubric, there's... So at what point will we talk about that? Because I feel like, as the year goes on, I think that it's only fair that we, as well as superintendent, is aware that that's how the evaluation would be.
Yeah, you know, I, 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 I wonder if it's a little unfair to change it now. I mean, like, maybe we should stick with what we've got now, because that's kinda like moving the goalposts either way, right? If we change it, we can maybe, you know, adopt it for the following year, or...
Since the goals have already been met, so, is that what you mean?
I'm not saying that we should change the goals.
No, no, I know, the, the, the instrument, the, the one from the state.
Right, right.
So...
I would also suggest, so, I've been doing a lot of reading about this today, because it's somewhat to do with what we heard last week about other districts and how they do, um, evaluations, and it's a little bit different. They have a conversation through the year. It's not just an evaluation at the end, like, one-time evaluation. It's more of a conversation so that the committee and the superintendent is aware of what, not only what direction, I guess, or more aware of what the committee is looking for. And in our case, the school committee doesn't have goals. You know, the district has goals, which we have said would align, you know, we don't have our own goals, 'cause they have, 'cause the district has goals. But I think, I think that that wouldn't, that that would be a good idea, and that maybe we could consider having a workshop meeting, or having a subcommittee on that subject.
Well, when we adopted the goals last month, that, that, that's adopting the goals.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we should change the goals.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying when you say the school committee doesn't have any goals, like, that's the goals we came up with, well, you know, she...
No, those are the superintendent's goals.
Right, but we agreed to them, right?
She's saying...
We agreed to accept her goal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think she's saying, like, goals, what we want to accomplish as a committee.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
All right, so what are you saying?
I'm saying that we should be having a conversation with the superintendent year-long, not just once a year at this meeting, about the goals. So we, we accept her goals.
I'm confused.
And then we evaluate her on them, and that's it. You know, there's no, I, well, we do do a mid-year review.
Right.
So we do have a conversation then, but I think it would be helpful, um, if we had more of a conversation year-long. And I think that happens in a lot of other districts. I, I know it does, because I've been doing some research on it. Some districts have subcommittees of the school committee, so, you know, like, we have a, a budget committee, we have, you know, different subcommittees, some, some school committees have a sub...
So, so what, what would that subcommittee work on?
It would, well, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
But I'd like to find out, and I'd like us to...
I, I think Ms. Morgan probably has some insight, she's been really trying to get a word in here.
I think, um, that's a good idea, to have a subcommittee to look at, um, how our procedures and, and our, you know, what we are doing as a school committee. For one thing, I'd like to see, you know, from being in a different district and how I see their school committee run, they have quite in-depth, um, information when they come to a school committee meeting. They have to approve contracts, they have to approve job descriptions, they have to approve, um, postings. So I think it would be advantageous to have a subcommittee to ta-, discuss all that.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any objections to that, I mean, that you guys, two of you at least would like that to happen.
Well, just adding on to what Joyce has said about, um, school committee goals.
In some of the breakouts I, I participated in at the MAS C, um, conference last week, there were, um, a lot of school committees that did have, they have their own sort of, kind of, goals where they set things, what they want to see accomplished, not just what the superintendent wants to accomplish or what the schools want to accomplish, but what the school committee wants to see accomplished, whether it's, you know, timeliness or whatever, you know, or having things done by a certain date, or if they say they want to see a transition of, you know, say, their transportation budget, or their, you know what I mean? Like, they have set goals that they set at the beginning of their year, um, so that they have it separate from, like, the superintendent's goals. So I definitely think if that's something that a subcommittee would be a part of, to maybe help align those goals, like, to figure out what we want to accomplish as a committee together, because our goal is to, you know, serve the community. So if we have no goal and we're just here to serve the community, I, like, if we have things that we wanna say, say, this is our fiscal year as well, this is our school year, our calendar year, whichever way we wanna devise it, but have ourselves have goals, what do we as a committee hope to accomplish to serve our community for this year going forward, and set our own standard, because I've heard a lot of other committees at that event were doing the same thing.
Well, but we had, sorry, do you have, I just, I just wanted to...
I wondered how you might be evaluated, and who would evaluate you?
The, the school committee?
Yes.
Yeah, you know what's interesting? There's a great quote by a very wise, wise person. He said that the, um, the school committee is evaluated every three years, and they call it elections, and that was Mr. Swett.
Well, I was just gonna say that, um, we've had this conversation a couple of meetings ago about goals, and we, we talked about it when we talked about the protocols, and we said, I believe, I know my memory is not great, but, and we said we didn't need our own goals, because we were following the strategic plan and the goals of the district. So we didn't, we had that conversation. So I appreciate what you're saying, April, I just, it's different than what I'm saying about the evaluation.
I was just saying, in addition to, where, you know, if a subcommittee is working on different things, that could be one of that committee's, the subcommittee's goals, is to have a periodic, like, timely check-in on where the superintendent is at with her goals, and then that subcommittee representative could report in the report of the school committee where things stand.
So, I, I mean, we have a long enough agenda tonight, but it's...
Yes, we do. So, just we're still on weighting of superintendent goals, and...
Well, thank you for letting me...
Which we already did. We're on to the class size report, October first, two thousand nineteen.
You have in your packet, class size report from the various schools. When you look at them, you will see the students listed by grade level, by section level, and it gives you the average class size. At the middle school, it gives you the class size by grade, and then the class size by department. With the average of the middle school, grade is twenty point two nine, and the class size by department is eighteen point four one. When you look, I'll go back, when you look at fourth grade, your average class size is in the low twenties, eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, and in third grade, it's in the high teens, and we have one class at twenty-one and twenty. At Deacon's, your class sizes are in the twenties, the low twenties, or twenty.
Pardon me, do we just have this to put up on the screen, or...
I don't know, Mr. Flaherty, I'll look.
Okay.
Can't, it's hard to juggle sometimes here. Let's see, class size, there you go.
Perfect, thank you.
So here's Deacon's. And this is really the summary. So then, when you go over, you look at the total number of students in elementary. Right now, we're at nine hundred and fifty-seven, our added district is at forty-six. When you look at fifth, sixth, and seventh, we're at five twenty-three. When you look at the past program, we're right now at forty-two. When you look at the high school, we have six fifteen, and our system is two thousand one hundred eighty-three. This year, we have, um, the students are going out. Charter is ninety-three, homeschool's forty-three, school choice is two fifty-eight, and Upper Cape is two fifty-two, and Bristol Aggie is five. You then go to the high school, which I do not believe that we have. And class sizes range depending on what subject area, anywhere from single digits to mid twenties.
All right, um, Ms. Morgan first, please.
So I do have a question as to, because I went on the DESI website that was updated as of October fourth, and they said the enrollment was one thousand nine hundred twenty-one.
Well, when Mrs. Ruiz did this, that was our figure, so we'll have to go back and see.
Yeah, I need to, and I, another question is, um, what about private schools?
Our school report is in January.
So, yeah, I was asked about that, too, the school, so the school attending report, which is, you know, gives a lot more detail on where the kids are going, uh, comes out, I guess, in January, yeah.
Well, on the DESI site, it's there, and they said they updated it October fourth.
Yeah, and then I was surprised about that, too, but I did re- review the minutes, and, and I think it wa-, it was in January, but even though the data's probably there.
Okay.
Ms. Rossi?
So I have a question on the, the class sizes. I'm assuming that these individual numbers are each classroom for the, each grade when it comes to the Deacon's and mine it. For second grade, the majority are twenty, twenty-two, nineteen, you have one class at twenty-four. Is, was there no way to say add one to the twenty class or the nineteen class to make them all about the same? Or is that a particular classroom? I'm just curious about the number, 'cause that's the only number, everything else seems to kinda be in line, one or two kids, and that one just seemed a couple higher than the others.
And that's just a, it's a homeroom, but there are three sep- separate students in that class.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, anyone else have any questions, comments? I, I, I would have some comments, but, uh, Mr. Palladino is noticeably absent.
He's at Neas.
All right, okay. All right, he's got a good excuse. I would have, you know, I had some questions about the, the perennial low numbers we see in, like, you know, IB and AP, but, but I'm not gonna beat that dead horse.
And special ed.
And special ed, yeah, well, you kind of expect it in special ed, right?
Can I, if I can talk about...
Expect it in anything that's specialized, yes.
So, I'm on the high school council, and so we did discuss this, um, report in there, and I'm certainly not speaking for him. I'm only gonna offer that, in some of these classes, in some of these, like, core classes, there's more than one teacher. So in an AP class, it's only one teacher.
Okay.
But in a core class, it's two.
Okay.
You have two teachers in a core class?
At special ed, it's team teaching.
So there's more...
I don't think they have that at the elementary level, or middle school.
Well, it's funny you say that, because I didn't bring it up, but we, Ms. Bakayaki, not to get too much off the subject, but when Ms. Bakayaki and I toured John W. Deacon's school, my God, there was, there was one class, it must have been four or six adults between the two, there was a, there's a dual room, you could see, you could walk between the two rooms. Those kids were getting all kinds of attention, it was, it was impressive.
Yeah, explain that one, please.
Just to clarify, we have a plethora of volunteers at John W. Deacon's school that I'm very, very proud of.
You should be.
Thank you for your service. But one particular room did have four adults, and one was a volunteer, one was, um, our, we have foster-grandparent program. I had an OT par-, uh, coda in there, and then the teacher, so...
Yeah, and, and those split between, I think, two rooms, because there was the one, you could walk between those two rooms.
That's right.
And, uh, but those kids were getting all the attention they needed, it was actually really good to see.
But it wasn't all staff?
No, it wasn't just all staff. But everybody likes to volunteer, and we actually have an excellent volunteer program that I just wanna quick, quickly shout out, too, because Ms. Tricker and Ms. Andrews are running the Red Bucket Brigade this year. They're gonna be doing a training on Wednesday, the twentieth, um, for any parents out there that are, wanna come and volunteer and be part of the Red Bucket Brigade, you just have to get your cory done, and it's a lot of fun. So that training will take place Wednesday, the twentieth of November, after school. Thank you.
Thank you.
By two special ed teachers that are rocking it, so thank you.
So I'm gonna retract my comments.
You tried.
Yeah.
Anything else on the school size report? All right, um, then moving on. Report of the superintendent.
All right, so on your sheet, you have the various warrants and payroll. We would also include payroll ending the week of November ninth in the amount of nine hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. The bill warrant for November twenty-first, nineteen, in the amount of forty-four thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. I, and the bill warrant on eleven fourteen, addition of three thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents. I would ask the committee to please approve all of the payroll warrants and the bill warrants.
We'll take a motion first, so, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I had asked, um, earlier in an email, what exactly is the fourteen thousand for Brian Swatzer video?
Those are the videos that we use to, um, for the school improvement plan, um, and any other promotion videos. Who did you email?
What was that?
I didn't get your email.
Oh, I emailed you.
So, so, so that was interesting, 'cause Ms. Morgan... So, so that was interesting, because Ms. Morgan emailed you and then I piggybacked on it too and said, yeah, I'm curious too. And then I, and I didn't hear anything and then I asked again.
Did you hear anything?
No.
Because I didn't get it.
That's weird. That's really weird.
So, we don't have our, I was under the impression we had our own people doing those videos.
We do not. We do not have anybody that's, that is trained to do that.
So, we've always been paying for these videos.
Like Christian?
He does not work for us. He does not do that for us.
So, every video we've ever seen was done, like, in this method?
Outsourced.
I like it, but it's, I don't think it's worth $14,000. I mean.
There's no AV club at the high school or anything that would have wanted to have been involved in something like that?
No.
Really? All right, well, that's.
I don't think we need to have them.
So, I mean, we could maybe have that discussion with this WCTV or something and see what's going on. I thought, no, way back, we had like sort of a media coordinator person, like, did she, was she involved in that?
Jamie?
Jamie, yeah, I didn't want to say her name, but yeah.
No, she did not. No, she did not do videos.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, that is what it is. But I was, I was surprised, you know, and Ms. Morgan had to dig that up on her own, but apparently you didn't get the email, emails. And you're usually very, I was surprised, you're usually very good at getting back, really fast. So, I didn't, after the third email, I was like, oh, maybe something's going on, anyway. Anything else on those, on the warrants?
No.
Have they been getting them in time? Because I've been getting kind of a slew.
I'm sorry.
Have they been getting them signed by me in time? Because I've been getting kind of a lot lately.
Yeah, no.
Right. And they're really good, they're really polite at reminding me too. So, so I guess we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Abstentions? All right, passes 3, 3-1. Yeah. Because, here's the thing, I mean, so, we just, we just approved money that was already spent. It's not like we can, like, you know, bring it back.
You can't take it back.
Yeah, this was.
No, I know.
I know what you're saying. Yeah. All right, moving on. So, you're done with your report? All right. Consideration of new bus transportation policy.
Is, what is this monthly financial report? Is that part of those?
Oh, oh, hello, yes, sorry. Do you have that?
No, that's not loaded.
It's, oh, but we have it in our packets.
You do.
Yeah. All right, do we want to discuss that?
I just have to.
Yeah, thank you.
It's listed as in November.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, great, thanks, Michelle.
Did you have anything, Joyce?
Well, I just, I did have some questions, but I already, the superintendent, excuse me.
Already what?
I did already ask about them, the questions that I had, but I'll just say them.
Sure.
Tonight, just, I had asked about tuitions, you know, for out-of-district and transportation for out-of-district, because it was, you know, maybe even overspent for the year. But she did explain to me that the tuitions and expenses have been encumbered as best they can for the year.
So, I think we.
So, they reflect a full year number and see their to-date number.
So, I think we received these yesterday and we, as I told you, we need a lot more time to digest this sort of stuff. But I was perusing it, I can't identify it at the moment, because I was looking at it online, but I noticed there were several items that we budgeted zero, but yet we ended up spending quite a bit, like $40,000 in one case and for, I can probably dig it up, it's not that far into it.
Could we make a motion to move it to the next agenda meeting, so we have time to go through each line item?
All right, well, were you going to answer something that I just was?
Yeah, I was going to tell you about, if it shows that it was budgeted as zero, then that meant that that had been taken out of that account as a mistake and what will happen will be, we will be going through those and making some journal entry transfers.
All right. But this is based on the budget we approved, I think, back in like September, I think, right? So.
So, can we move it till, to the next meeting, so that we can, those transfers will be reflected and we have?
Those transfers will not, it will not be done by then.
Yeah, so, anyway, so, we can do that. I mean, this is the monthly report, so, next.
I would like more time to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Through each line.
Yeah, so.
Would it be helpful to, instead of looking at it, line item, to look at it either by school, by department? Would that be more helpful and so then those differences would be reflected and the totals would be more meaningful?
Whatever you'd like.
Well, this says, like, in some parts of it, says Deacon's, says middle school, so.
Right, but we could see it, in the past, we've seen these reports, not line item, but by major count or by school.
But this tells us specifically what is being paid for. Otherwise, you're just going to have a long sum.
Yeah, I like it line itemmed.
We used to get it both ways, I think, you know?
Like a summary and then the line items.
Right. Well, right now, I mean, they're working with the town to make some of these corrections and like she said, it's not done, you know, it might not be done by our next meeting. So, that's why I just thought the total might be more meaningful. And maybe this, maybe we can look at this report just with.
Yeah, I don't even care if it's the same report, you know what I mean?
Subtotals, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care if it's the same report, we just, we'll have more time by then to discuss it.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if you can update it, great, but even if we just discuss this report, I'd be happy. I just need more time to digest it.
Right, yeah.
I've been working on evaluations. Jeez, so.
Can I make a motion to move this line item on the monthly financial report to our next meeting agenda?
You may, but you need to be specific on which date. So, what's that date of our next meeting, Michelle?
I have to get you a gender.
21st.
Next week?
It's next week.
Okay, so.
We have a meeting next week?
To talk about the budget.
So, is it just for the budget or it's just for the, oh, so, that's appropriate, then?
The 20-something is already next week? No, November stop.
So, sure, that's just, what's that date?
1st, I think.
So, yeah, the motion, the motion to table this until the November 21st meeting?
Yes.
So, so moved?
Yes.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 4-0-0. Now, now moving on to consideration of new bus transportation policy. Is that, are you guys? This is the new one, right?
It's because the other one was confusing and I think we turned that one into a weather one, right?
Inclimate weather.
Inclimate weather.
But, but this is a new one. This is not an existing one.
Right.
And it doesn't even go to policy review, I thought.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why it's here.
Who wants to discuss it or comment or?
Is there a previous policy?
No, it's new.
No, this is new, because the other one, we changed, we changed to the weather.
So, we didn't have a policy that talked about the charging for buses?
No.
And so, and so, just to, you had outlined it pretty well in your newsletter, that the process that we're doing here about, this is like the first bite at the apple. We're not going to vote on anything. This is just like presenting the new policy, which I like. I like that we're doing this. You get to digest it, the public gets to digest it if they're interested and, you know, send feedback to us or what have you, but this is just the first bite at the apple, really.
Is there another question?
Yeah, go for it.
Does this reflect what we're doing right now? As is.
Yep.
Go for it.
It was recommended by the policy subcommittee group that we take the language that's on the website from the bus about transportation that goes out to families when they sign up and use much of that to describe the policy, because all we had was an inclement weather policy and it was really confusing, because it dealt with too many things within that policy. So, we made that smaller, more understandable for inclement weather and what happens. And we took the new information, because we just started charging two years ago, so we just took that new information and transitioned it as a result of the policy subcommittee's recommendation onto a policy, a new policy for the committee to consider.
And then it also sets the deadline of when registration forms will be accepted. As you know, that certainly has been a task.
Any further discussion? Comments, questions? All right, moving on. Thank you. Report of the school committee, recommendations from policy review committee. Ms. Morgan.
All right, the first one on the list is the goal statement and the only change to it is what's highlighted there in the vision statement. Believes that all members of our school committee should be appreciated, impactful, joyful, connected and balanced in order to continue to offer. And the other one highlighted isn't a change. It just was accidentally highlighted.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, can I just, so that sentence just has too many words in it. Will that just be corrected? Continue to offer, will provide. It's still there in mine, I don't know.
Five.
It is, all right, it's not in mine, okay. Second then.
All right, any, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 4-0-0. Next?
Okay, the next one is emergency health procedures and it's basically the procedures regarding children, it makes me scratch, with head lice. And nothing has been changed to it. There was a discussion on whether or not we should follow along with some of the other districts who have gone with guidelines that say that a child can return if they have nits, because then their rationale for that is because nits don't necessarily as contagious as lice live.
As a hairdresser, I can say that that's false and they are just as contagious and you definitely want to make sure that they are fully removed from the strands several times and treated before they are around other children, sharing hats, hairbrushes, playing close enough to each other, that that could happen. So, I would rather not have that wording on the policy.
Well, the policy committee agrees with you, so. But the other concern too was that how often a child might be absent due to it. I actually remember a child when I was at Minnet, who, she was chronically absent because of it. It's too bad we can't actually do the treatment right within the school, but I know we're not going to be doing that.
It's very time-consuming.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-0-0. Next?
All right, next one is the weather one and this is, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the original title was just bus transportation, wasn't it? That's what I thought. All right, so that's why we came up with the other bus transportation policy, or that's being presented tonight as well. So, the only thing that has changed in this is, one, the title, and then, two, the highlighted section, where it says, "In the non-serviceable area, one mile less, not otherwise qualifying for transportation." And also, there's an "and/or," superintendent and/or business manager, transportation director and school resource officer.
Go ahead, Ms. Rossi.
Can I just ask a question? When it says the bus stop will be one stop for minus 150, in any of the amount of times that I've had my child ride the bus since he's been in Wareham, I've never heard of them moving the bus stop for snow. So, I'm unaware, I don't know, maybe I just live in an area, because I don't have sidewalks at all, so I guess that might have been why it wasn't an affected area for me, but is this something that is commonplace, that they will move a bus stop to a central location if the roads or the sidewalks are like very snowy or icy? Like, I've never seen or heard this before, so that's why I'm just asking questions.
We have set up bus stops in common areas, so like Stop &amp; Shop parking lot or Shaw's parking lot. What we find, not very many people take us up on it and so it's not, it's not used. It goes out and after about the first or second big snows, if people aren't using it, it probably doesn't get put out again.
Yeah, because I've never even heard that communicated in all the times that my child's been a member of the schools, so I don't know how, how is that information getting transmitted to parents? Is that an all-call? Is that an email? Is that something that goes out that says, "In light of inclement weather, should the sidewalks become impassable? If you can get your child to Stop &amp; Shop, you can ride the bus?" Like, I'm just wondering how that works.
Yeah. We didn't use it at all last year because of the weather. I think we started trying to make this very available when we cut the service from, to one, from one mile. And the way we had it is, we had some, we had it listed on the website. It could have gone out via letter. Other than that, I couldn't tell you. I'd have to talk to transportation.
Ms. Morgan?
I will say that was brought up at the meeting as well. There were two parents there who questioned the same thing.
Yeah, and I think it's a good option, but if, I mean, the likelihood of, if the sidewalks in those people's areas are impassable, more than likely the road is, and having the parents have access to get their kid then there, if the road is also impassable, seems kind of like a moot point, but I do think it is a good option if there is the possibility, but I definitely don't ever recall this being communicated as a parent. So, if we could look at how, you know, even if we have to take a parent survey to find out what the best way to, if they, one, if they'd be willing to participate in this if it, as it were offered, and what they think would be the best means of communicating it, maybe that would be an option to figure out, one, if it's even worth us having this, if no one's going to utilize it, and two, how it's going to be communicated, because like I said, I've never heard of it before. My kid's been in school since first grade.
Has he always been transported?
Always by bus, yeah.
But then it wouldn't have applied.
Right, can I ask a question? So, this is only if you don't ride the bus on a normal basis and you live less than a mile from the school, then on those days, then you can have a ride.
Okay, so that, see, that seems unclear. Like, if that could be worded maybe somewhere in that, like, that that's, because this just says, "When the sidewalks are walk," because if they're over a mile, Stop &amp; Shop is way more than a mile, so that would.
I just made that up.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, but, you know what I mean?
Which Shaw's might be applicable, because that's less than a mile.
Right, which that would make sense, but I'm just, if it could just maybe be a little clearer, I.
It says in the non-serviceable area, one mile or less, or otherwise not qualifying for bus, for transportation.
I just think from someone reading this quickly, going through the handbook kind of thing, that they're not going to, if we can make even the word "non-serviceable," I don't know, something with the wording just seems like it might be, like, I read this the first time and I was just completely confused by it, so I'm just, I don't know if there's something else that can be worded that, you know, if, I don't know.
You want to, do you want to suggest any wording?
That's why I'm trying to think right now when I'm looking at it.
Because it does also say, "Not otherwise qualifying for transportation."
Maybe use the, in non, like, switch it, the order, like, "In non-serviceable areas, when sidewalks or walkways become impassable, if you don't otherwise qualify for transportation, a bus stop will be provided." So it reads a little bit clearer for a layperson who doesn't, you know what I mean? Otherwise, it just seems like I could, I can, obviously, if I'm looking at it and confused, and I understand what we're trying to say, I can understand that somebody who has no idea what they're, what they're looking at could be like, "Well, this doesn't make any sense." Just to re, you know what I mean, just reorganize the structure of the sentence with the same wording. I think that might be helpful.
Okay, I mean, I can bring it back. Or we can make a vote on it now, right? Just to reword it a little bit?
If you can, yeah, you can re, right now, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. This is, because the policy review is, is an advisory board to this board, so, I mean, you know, you can take their advice, or, you know, respectfully decline, or.
So if it read, "In non-serviceable areas, one mile or less, when sidewalks or walkways become impassable to a bus stop," a bus stop will, or, become impassable, a bus stop will be provided to K through 12 students residing in the Wareham, you know, area, if they're not, if they don't otherwise qualify for transportation. I just think just, just breaking up the two sentences and kind of sandwiching it makes it a little bit easier to read.
Is that, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion to change the wording.
So, so repeat it again very clearly, just from, just so Ms. Ruiz knows what she's kind of have to do here.
Okay, so I make a motion to, okay, sorry. I do talk fast, I apologize. To reword the inclement weather bus transportation initial sentence to read, "In the non-serviceable area, one mile or less, when sidewalks or walkways become impassable, a bus stop will be provided to K through 12 students residing in Wareham, not otherwise qualifying for transportation." Just san, breaking up that sentence and sandwiching it, so it reads a little bit more.
Clear.
Clear.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Please, passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, then the next two sort of go together, the public comment one, and then also the standing rules of procedure. And really, there wasn't a final decision on either. There was a discussion about it. With the public comment, first thing that was noticed by Dr. Schwalm was the second paragraph there, where it says that the middle, we meet at the middle school on the first and third Wednesdays of each month, should be changed to here, the multi-service center, and also that it stayed, get the two scheduled meetings instead of a particular day, so we don't have to go back and, and change it again. And then also, we talked about changing public comment to partic, back to participation, public participation. We also had a discussion about whether or not this, it says anywhere in here that the school committee cannot respond to someone who says something at public comment. So we asked Dr. Shaverhood to, to hand it over to the school attorney. And he mentioned, he did answer that by saying that there's nothing in the policy that he sees that would prevent a school committee member from responding to a comment. But he does say, however, you know, that it shouldn't be really only questioning to get more clarification from the person, and not, rather than engaging with the individual about it. So it's not really, this time is not really intended to be a discussion or debate. So you could really just be for questioning to clarify, or just letting the person know that we'll look into it, or, or whatever.
All right, so, so the whole committee received that, right, from Ms. Pagnini? I'm gonna, I'm gonna just read into the record, so there's no ambiguity, okay? So, and, and Ms. Ruiz, you have the document as well, right? So, so this is from Greg, Greg Pagnini, he's our school counsel. And he, and this was sent November 7th, in response to Dr. Shaverhood's question. Says, "Yes, there is nothing in the policy that I see that would prevent the school committee member, prevent a school committee member from responding to a comment slash question posed to the committee during the public comment period." Parentheses, "That the policy, that the policy anticipates individuals asking questions of the SC would, to me, also imply that the SC would need to answer those questions as well," end parentheses. "That said, in my experience, comments from the school committee members in an open comment period are typically limited to trying to clarify what an individual is saying, rather than engage in the individual in dialogue about an issue. It is not easily intended to be a debate, it, well, it is not really intended to be a debate or discussion, more an opportunity for members of the public to state their viewpoints. Any comments from the school committee members are also typically directed through the chair." So he's just going on about his experience about that. But nonetheless, this policy doesn't prohibit anyone on the school committee from engaging, you know, as, as that might be appropriate. So, for example, I mean, we've had some, some real passionate, you know, people coming up here. We had Mrs. Perola give a very heartfelt testimony. And then, and then we had Mickey Dargan Fredericks come, and she, again, very emotional, very, you know, heartfelt, very, you know, urgent. And then, and then Anne Dargan come as well, all, you know, very upset and emotional. And we just sit here like bumps on a log, because we think we can't talk back, but it turns out, this whole time, we could. And I went back to when this, this, this policy was renamed. I went and checked the, the video, and that was back when Ms. Caparicchio was chair. And I reviewed it, and essentially, I'm gonna liken to what happened at that meeting to pretty much what happened with the Mine at Forest Warren article. Basically, the policy was renamed, and that's it. It was changed from public participation to public comment, and nothing, none of the guts were changed. So just, you, they renamed an article, they renamed a, a policy without changing any substance. So as far, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, Mr. Pagnini lays it out, I mean, there's nothing preventing the chair from recognizing anyone, well, actually, on this policy, I'm sorry, on this policy, there's nothing stopping the school committee members from engaging the public. And, and I don't know if we have to change anything, really, except maybe the name. The name's fine.
The name, and then also just the sentence about us being.
Yeah, and I was gonna suggest just taking that whole sentence out, like, why, because then it's, it's future-proof, right?
Yeah, we could do that.
So.
It was also suggested that the chair read.
Oh, right.
The A, B, and C at every meeting prior to public comment.
Yeah, it's, so I don't know if we have to put that in the policy, but that sounds like just good, it's good advice, something good to do, you know?
What is that? What is A, B, C?
It just reminds people of what.
Oh, right here, this A, B, C, okay.
Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, I thought at the committee, we also talked about having a work session or an opportunity for the public to come and see us, starting at 6:30 before meetings, to see if we would have people come. And then we would also try to have comment after certain vote items, to see which was more successful in generating public participation.
That actually, sorry to interrupt, that actually, and I was gonna get to that, that actually came up when I started talking about the standing procedures and policies. So that, that's true. So we talked about having citizens be able to have more, you know, discussion about the agenda items. And we talked about two different ways. One, which Dr. Shaverhood suggested, was a half hour before the meeting to allow people to come in and, and talk about their views on the agenda items. And then another way that one of the parents suggested was trying it throughout the meeting, to giving, in fact, they're given maybe a total of 15 minutes. So they would only be allowed 15 minutes to speak at all. So they could divide it up, like, five minutes here, five minutes there, five minutes elsewhere. But it was suggested that we try both ways to see which would be best.
Do you think we need a policy for that, or couldn't that just happen?
I, in my opinion, I'd say we can just, and that's where that subcommittee, I, you know, Joyce kind of brought up, and I, you know, supported it in that I'd like to be looking at different school committees and how they, what they do at school committees, such as having to approve contracts and job postings and all of that, and that could be part of it, too. You know, looking at that.
Ms. Beckyaki?
Well, I don't have a question. I just wanna, so Mary and I were both on the committee when this got changed to public comment. And you're right, it did just get changed from participation to comment, but I think it was to fall in line with the selectmen also made that change. And maybe I led you wrongly, you know, when you, so about being able to make a comment. We, we don't have to sit here and not speak, just not, as you said, engage with, you know, someone, because that could go in the wrong direction. But, but certainly, we can, we can speak to them. We can thank them.
Say that again? Certainly, we can what?
Speak.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, I guess that was.
Say we can, you know, we have to sit here like bumps on a log. I didn't, when, I didn't mean that we don't, we can't speak at all.
So, okay, so I guess we're all in agreement. So, and it's a shame that it's, it was kind of.
Because I, that wasn't the impression I got when Ms. Dargan was here.
It was the same. I didn't have the impression I was able to speak to her or anyone.
And, and many.
Well, I mean, speak, you know, acknowledge someone's presence, and yes, I mean.
So, and, and it's, it's before, it's beyond Ms. Beckyaki, too. I mean, I remember school committee meetings back when this policy was, shortly after it was changed, and, and watching them at home, being like, when did that happen? Why could they not talk anymore, you know?
And that just shows how new I was, because that totally went over my head when that was.
So, so I'm glad, I'm glad, I mean, we're in agreement. I mean, so, so individual, it's up to individuals, I mean, and you don't have to go through the chair. I mean, if, if you, if you want to address somebody, you just, you know, raise your hand, I'll, I'll recognize you and, and go for it. But it's, it's just a shame that some very passionate people were, I don't want, I don't want to say ignored, but they, but they were, from their perspective, they were ignored. And I followed up with some of them, you know, afterwards and stuff, and, and it all worked out, in some cases, but.
I didn't say that they were ignored.
Oh, they were, they were ignored, yeah. And, yeah, they were ignored. Ms., Ms. Rossi?
I would like to, from my tenure so far on the committee, I'd just like to publicly apologize from my understanding of the fact that we weren't, in my, the way I was led to believe, we weren't allowed to address them. Whether or not that, obviously, that wasn't the case, but from my understanding, I was under the impression that we were not, because of the comment versus participation line, I was under the impression we were not allowed to. So I would like to apologize to anyone who has come since I've been on the committee that I haven't, there have been things I would have liked to address at those times. So I do apologize for not having the correct understanding of this. And going forward, hopefully, that will make it easier for people who felt like they weren't heard, able to come to us more confidently that we will be able to address this going forward in light of a huge oversight of interpretation of this policy.
And, and don't get me wrong, certainly from reviewing that meeting, the, the spirit and gist of the people that, that were advocating for it, wanted it to be that the school committee, it was, they were insulated, essentially, from, from going, from giving comment. And I'm like, what's the point of even showing up, you know, if you're a member of the public? So that's why the past practice then became current practice. And, 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 I mean, I, you know, words matter, and I'm reading this, and I'm like, I don't see why we can't, and certainly, and Mr. Pagnini agreed. I do have a question, though. So, so Mr. Pagnini replied on November 7th, and I was surprised, why, why wasn't the chair of the policy review given that?
I don't know.
Okay, well, she, she needed it. I mean, that's, that's her committee. So I, I had a sense to everybody, but I didn't, I didn't even know, but he had forwarded it to me that, that, you know, you're back from November 7th. So anyway, okay, so, oh, go ahead.
I, I just have one more question for the committee, and that would be if we could try, because I know that the parents on the, on the committee policy review committee were anxious to try it, to try the half hour prior to the school committee meeting.
So, so meet, meet as a committee at 6:30?
Yeah.
They could try it. I, I mean, so we've, the thing is, we, we agreed to, you know, a set schedule back at the beginning of the year, and that's kind of in stone. I don't see why we can't add another meeting to it, but people might have made commitments based on that schedule, may not, may not be able to make it, but, but, yeah, I don't see why we can't try it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, so with that, what are the amendments? Do we have any amendments?
I'd add on to that. Would it be possible, because I know, obviously, like, Ms. Spears' schedule and her work schedule, sometimes my work schedule might play into effect with people being able to be here. Would we be able to, if a public comment were to come, would, would that be something that we could have, as like, whoever from the committee is able, and then in the report of the school committee, something that can be brought up during the agenda item? Or, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if they, if people were able to be here at 6:30, some people can or can't, depending on their work schedule. So if some of our committee members were able to be there, would that be some, whenever there is a public comment, would that be able to be at, readdressed under the report of the school committee to the remainder of the school committee if they're not able to be there?
So, so I think that's gonna come up under the next policy that we're gonna bring up, but the standing, the standing rules, what's.
Okay.
Okay.
Which I thought of, that's, that's when our discussion went into this. It's so, and we got cut off because of the building people.
Building hole, I guess.
Could I just ask one more question? So if you, if we were to, to meet at 6:30, and no one comes for public comment, do we then go on with our meeting?
I would think not, no.
Because people would be expecting, right?
That, and, and, oh, by the way, we can't, we can't meet, really, I mean, three people have to show up.
Right.
If only two show up, that might as well be zero.
Right.
I guess we, you know, we could walk out the door, or whatever, maybe the superintendent and, that's just a superintendent, maybe they want to answer questions, but we can't.
Okay.
So, so are there any amendments on this, or anything?
Yeah, there are minutes.
Amendments.
Oh, amendments, no.
Besides the changing multi-service?
Well, no, 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 I mean, for, as far, as far as us, are we going, do we want to?
Other than deleting that paragraph?
I'd like to delete the sentence, anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Delete the whole sentence?
The one, let's see.
The regular meetings.
So it says, "Regular meetings are customarily held at Wareham Middle School on the first and third Wednesdays of each month." That, that, that one sentence, I think, can go.
Right, but I thought she had said to change it, that the meetings would be customarily held at the multi-service center, and change it to two scheduled meetings each month, with no specific dates or days.
Because then, then we gotta change it every time we change where we're gonna meet, and it's, it's.
Well, that's why it says "customarily," so.
I'll do whatever you want, but I, I, I don't like it.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not necessary for the policy.
I mean, I kind.
The schedule is online, the actual meeting schedule is online, which, when this was created, it probably wasn't.
So do I have a motion to delete that sentence?
So moved.
Second?
I second it.
All right, all those in favor, please say. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, because we had asked for it, too.
Well, that's, well, that's why I had mentioned to, way back when this, when this agenda was drafted, and I said, I thought some of this was gonna go back to the policy review, but it's up to the chair of that meeting to decide what gets on.
Because I wanted to bring up the recommendations.
She just wanted to share with me, I think, what was going first, or.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
All right, so, so, I mean, so this is moved, in your opinion, you know?
Yeah, and, and so then I'll bring up your, also, when it goes back to the committee, I'll, I'll let them know that most of us agree that, you know, to take that line out, the paragraph out.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, fine. So, so we're done with discussion on, well, so, we, we did have a motion, a second, can the, can the motioner retract, or rescind?
Retract my motion.
And the secondary agree? Does the secondary agree?
Oh, yes, I agree.
Okay, yes, all right, so that's rescinded. So moving on to the next one, which is the standing rules. I mean, I guess we can have a robust discussion on that, but we're not gonna take any votes. going to take any votes.
Right, and, and like I said, the only thing that came out of that, when I, when I brought that one up, then we got into the, having the time for the public to come a half hour before or throughout the, the meetings.
All right, and I-
And that was the only thing that really came up.
So, so yesterday, I received some feedback from Mr. Pagnini as well on that, and I was going to share it, you know, now, so I'll just, you can have this, and you can, the committee can have it, and share it with, you know, your, your committee as well.
Is there one more question also?
I think so. Feel free to read it if, you know, you can wait.
Okay.
So some food for thought there. And, let's see, so, well, I'll let you guys read that.
Okay, that's like redundant one and four.
And now, when is the next meeting of the policy review?
It'd be December, what's the first Monday in December? Whatever the first Monday is in December.
December?
December 2nd.
Now, are both of you able to attend that one?
I should be able to, it's always at five.
Will you be able to meet, Ms. Rossi?
I believe, that's, yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at the calendar right now. Yes.
Okay, great, awesome. So, moving on, are we done with policy review?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Michelle, for doing the parliamentary thing. All right, so we're on to Chair to release executive session minutes. September 16th, 2015, October 21st, 2015, June 21st, 2017, February 7th, 2019, March 14th, 2019, April 11th, 2019, and June 6th, 2019. Well, I just released them, I don't have to need a vote or anything, so I'll just, I'll just say that I did review these. Ms. Ruiz had them all nice and ready for me, and I sat down, and these were old, some of these were like, like Mr. Minkel, like, he was still principal, you know? So I wasn't, I mean, so normally I would like abstain, but I don't, it's not even a matter of me, like, you know, being there, so, so it's just a matter of me approving them, and I, and I assume that they're, they're ready to be approved. Yeah, that's why I do, I release these minutes, like a magic wand, there you go.
I was going to say, you're going to pass them all?
So this is, yeah, that was, that was like blast from the past, reading some of these.
2015, it's been a while.
Yeah, that's crazy, that must be an interesting one.
Okay, so, so, yeah, we're on to the evaluation of the superintendent for 2018, 2019. For those who are joining us at the regular time, we, we met at 6:30 with a single agenda item of just distributing the, the evaluations that, you know, the individual committee evaluations to the superintendent and each other, and I think that was about five or 10 minutes, and then we adjourned, because we had to do that per open meeting law. A recent court case decided that I couldn't email these to the, to the committee, because that would constitute a deliberation among the whole quorum, which was really a surprise to us, and Ms. Beckyaki and I were at the mass conference, and this came up a couple, a couple of sessions, and I had, I asked all kinds of questions, I'm like, you've got to be kidding me, you know, because it, because the goal was to have some time to digest these, and I was going to send them to, you know, Dr. Shaverhood and the rest of the committee on Tuesday, so that there was some time to at least digest them, and that went flying. I mean, had, had I known this, I spoke with another school committee member, and what they had said, what they, their workaround for it was, you meet like a week before, you know, you just have to meet an open session, you would meet a week before, and then, you know, distribute them, and then go home, and then, you know, take it up at, you know, your next meeting. But we just didn't have time to do that, I mean, town hall is closed on Friday, you can't get an agenda, Monday was a holiday, you know, so, so, just, so it was, it's awkward, I apologize, but it's, nothing, nothing could be done. Because had, I could have, I could have legally given them directly to the superintendent, but that would have left the school committee in the dark, and, and I served at the pleasure of the school committee, and I just didn't feel right about that. That said, so, you all have the, well, oh, hold on, shoot, you all have the, the evaluations from all of us, with the summary and such, but today, like, hours before this meeting, I received Ms. Spears, and if, does anyone have that one handy, just so I can read it into the record? So, so this is, this is Ms. Spears' evaluation, she's been, as, as you know, she, as I mentioned quite a bit, she's got quite a lot going on with work, but I just wanted to read it into the record, so, so there was something, so there's a number, there's something here. So this, I received this from Ms. Spear today, November 14th, at, I, I got it in an email at 11:22, I think I probably saw it around 2 o'clock this afternoon, or maybe 1:30 or so, and I, and I did text her a bit and get some clarifications, but this, this is it. "Mike, my hope is you take this email with a rating of proficient for the superintendent evaluation. I can have the paperwork to you at a later date, but I will not have them in time for the meeting tonight. I was given the books three days before the evaluation was due and did not have sufficient time to prepare a written evaluation. My score came out, and 84.8 was, and 84.8 when done." Thank you, Lori. And when she says, the book, she's referring, she's referring to the binders, and Dr. Shaverhood has, like, really big binders of all kinds of, you know, supporting evidence throughout the year of, you know, correspondence and such that, that's gone on, and, and I, and it just, just, I mean, I had mentioned to her that, you know, we all, we all had a month to do this, and, and the binders are supplemental, and I wish she could have, you know, actually had something more than this, but it is what it is. So, that's all I've got, but at least, at least there's a number, you know, at least you've got, you know, a rating and a number, and that's what I had asked for, so thank you with that. And with that, the Chair, the Chair has, oh, shoot. Can you dig up the Excel spreadsheet on that? It's just got the summary on it, just put it on the screen. So this just, this, this just has an Excel spreadsheet on it with the ratings and such, but while, while she's, while she's doing that, I do have a narrative, I guess you'd call it, or a summary that I, that I prepared.
Closer to you, yeah, it won't fit.
Oh, you got a little wire in the way?
No, there maybe, got it.
Let me, let me just wait, so I can just pointer to which one it is.
I think it's, this is orange.
Yeah, it's in orange.
Okay.
So, it's the XLS document in there, probably the third one down?
Not this one?
No, no, not that one. The, the third one down, XLS, yeah, that one.
Oh, there you go.
So if we, if we meant, yeah, so just, so as the public, we all have this document, and actually, this one is updated with Ms. Spears' numbers. The other, with the hard copies that I've gave, I've given them, do not have, don't have it, because I had prepared them before I received Ms. Spears' evaluation. But I'd like to just read a little narrative that, that goes along with this as well. Thank you. Wehren Public School Superintendent Evaluation Summary 2018 to 2019, November 14th, 2019. The five-member Wehren School Committee, excuse me, the five-member Wehren School Committee has concluded its evaluation of Superintendent Dr. Kimberly Shaverhood for the 2018-19 period. In summary, the final individual ratings range from proficient to unsatisfactory. The scores range from 63.45 to 88.1. When averaged together, they totaled a score of 76.83, which corresponds to the final rating of, quote, "needs improvement." By no means does this summary provide a clear or even representative sample or description of the hard work and effort that went into running an entire Wehren, running the entire Wehren Public School District for a whole year. As the current Chairman of the Wehren Public School Committee, it has been my duty and privilege to bear witness to much of the work that the rest of the school committee never sees. The immeasurable hours, the, the middle-of-the-night emails, the gut-wrenching judgment calls, and the ability to maintain dignity and decorum when under constant scrutiny, whether merited or not. As you will see by some of the quotes I excerpted below, they are compartmentalized, much in the same manner I have found the superintendent to conduct herself in order to keep moving forward. She never lets challenges in one area distract from the others, and she adopts, and she adapts as necessary. Unfortunately, in education, the rating of, quote, "needs improvement" has a certain added negativity associated with it, especially for the top official earning the top salary. It's not supposed to, but it does. When others are rated as, when others are rated as needs improvement, it is often described as, as an opportunity to grow and improve. My hope is that moving forward, my other colleagues on the school committee will agree to view it that way as well." And with that, I just excerpted some, I tried, I tried to do two quotes from everybody in no particular order. There's not, I don't have any from Ms. Spear, so, and obviously, some of these might be obvious to who wrote them, but as I, as I wrote here, it said, "Some, some excerpted quotations, some excerpted quotations follow in no particular order and are intentionally unattributed. Again, these are in no way meant to be understood as a representative sample, and anyone interested is encouraged to view the full copies of the evaluations, which are public documents." So here's some quotes. "Data and research might as, might well be our new motto in Wehren Public Schools. I understand in some cases there has been some reluctance by staff to buy into certain new data methods and approaches. However, success begets success, and the more I speak with our educators, the more they are embracing these new methods, and the, and the results keep getting better." Next. "When it came to adhering to the school committee policies, there was zero adherence to the committee policy regarding budget transfers. This led to a tremendous effort over the entire summer to reconcile the FY19 budget. Furthermore, as a result, we had to make wholesale transfer adjustments in the beginning of the year, of the year for the fiscal year '20 budget. That is something I've never seen in my five years on the school committee. All of this, you agreed, would have been avoided if you had adhered to the committee policy requiring committee approval of transfers beyond the percentages set forth in the budget policy. I do recognize that other personnel are involved in the budget process. Again, though, this is not their evaluation, it's the superintendent's." Next. "In light of the ongoing budget complications of no longer having a business manager currently, I feel the fiscal system's standard needs improvement." Next. "While I applaud the many excellent programs offered, I feel parental engagement could vastly be improved." Next. "Unfortunately, all the initiatives that the superintendent has supported in the district have not encouraged students to stay, and many of these initiatives are not accessible to the average or struggling students. I do believe that the superintendent has good intentions for students and has put forth great effort on her behalf. However, it has not produced the student progress that I would have hoped to see, and there are students who are, who aren't able to be successful because of it. I also fully disagree with the superintendent's leadership style and believe that we have lost good employees due to it." Next. "The middle school improved overall on MCAS. The low-income and high-needs subgroups declined on MCAS at Minnet and the high school. I am especially surprised to see all the, see the all-students category at the high school decline, because they have IB, AP, and dual enrollment programs, where students are given more rigorous instruction. It is also surprising to me that only seven students received a five or a four on AP exams. I continue to recommend more vocational programming at the high school level to give this opportunity to students who are unable to attend, who are unable to get into the tech school." Next. "I am also a member of the Budget Advisory Committee. In absence of a business manager, the superintendent has taken on that role with the help of the town. I feel that it is important to note that, to note that, that fact here in her evaluation. This has required many extra hours of work for her. I appreciate that she reached out to the Budget Advisory Subcommittee on many occasions to share relevant information and ask for direction. She has, she has formed solid relationships with those in the town, parentheses, Town Administrator, Human Resources, Town Accountant, and parentheses, and this, and this is helpful when dealing with the school budget. Communication is so important, and she, and she does have an open line of communication with the town hall. Also, she has made a point to meet regularly with the Town Finance Committee." Next, I think this is the last one. "In the past, I've had the opportunity to serve on several negotiating committees with the superintendent. She has always conducted herself in the most professional manner and willing to listen and consider the opinions of others. When you are the superintendent of a district with this many employees, is everyone going to be happy 100% of the time? Absolutely not. What I have observed, however, is that the superintendent has dealt with, has dealt with any employee issue in a fair manner. When setting policy, the superintendent is very knowledgeable in the law and the requirements of the district." And, and that's it. And I guess I'll open it to any comments or questions from the committee or the superintendent. Ms. Morgan?
I'd just like to expand a little bit on my quote, that where I talked about, I disagree with the leadership style, and I just want to explain a little bit of why. So I'm just going to read the paragraph that is written on that. So it is, "I have grave concerns with the superintendent's leadership style and management of finances. Four people have left the business office since last year. One resigned, and three were terminated. One of these employees was a long-term employee who had been with the district over 20 years. The business manager, who was terminated, 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 never received a formal evaluations as stated in her contract." And I quoted what was in the contract about there, there was agreed-upon evaluation at least twice annually. And this indicates to me that the business manager never received the agreed-upon feedback to make improvements. It is also noteworthy to read school committee notes from Sharon, where the business manager was an employee for over 20 years and referred to as an exemplary employee. I am concerned that this woman's livelihood may have been destroyed due, due to a lack of support by the superintendent. It also makes me question whether or not the other employees let go or given the support they needed to be successful." I did ask about the person who had been employed for over 20 years and was told by the former business manager that she, in retrospect, saw that the employee was expected to do the work of two people and was overwhelmed. Since I've been on this committee, I've always brought it up, I've always been concerned about the number of administrators who have left the district. There have been five middle-school principals, three deacon's principals, three special ed directors, four food service directors, by the way, one of the, the last one left mid-year, resigned mid-year, two transportation directors, three principals at the co-op, and several assistant principals. I have spoken directly to 10 of the administrators who have left, and all of them confirmed that the support given by the superintendent was lacking and at times hostile. I will also point out that none of these administrators want to be specifically named, because they still hold a fear of some sort of retaliation." And that's as much as I want to say of that one, of that.
Anyone else on the committee? Dr. Shaverhood?
Nothing.
All right. So, so these, these come, you see, the summary does no justice to these things, because, for example, I rated needs improvement, but there are several areas where I selected outstanding, proficient, you know, needs improvement, and it's, it's a gamut, and the, the, the evaluation is a very comprehensive form. There are so many areas in this that I, I believe I was fair, you know, and, and, you know, fair but firm, but, but I just recommend people look at it, because it is a very comprehensive document that covers many areas. It's not just a simple, you know, needs improvement, there's a, there's a bigger story to, to, to these numbers, a much bigger story. And with that, I, I think...
Actually, can I, can I add?
Sure.
Is that all right? So, the last two comments that you read were mine, so I guess I would just elaborate on those by saying that I do spend a lot of time in meetings. I was Chair for the first half of the year, so I spent a lot of, I spent a lot... I was chair for the first half of the year, so I spent a lot of, I spend a lot of time in meetings, in building committee meetings, in budget meetings, in negotiations. So I spend a lot of time with the superintendent, and so my evaluation, my rating of proficient, was based on that. And like you said, the evaluations are online, they can certainly be read online. I also found that no one else, I didn't hear it referred to, I thought that the independent district review that was done by DESI was a really important document to refer to because, you know, we often, we've talked about evaluations and evaluations being independent of us, and, I mean, what better, who better than DESI to come in and evaluate our district? And, you know, I quoted the DESI report in my evaluation. So I guess I would just like to say that, you know, this is a once-a-year evaluation, but honestly, I'm having conversations all year long. And obviously, this is a requirement of the school committee, but my, again, my rating of proficient is based on, like, week-to-day, week-to-week experience working with the superintendent.
Yeah, and I agree that the DESI document is compelling and powerful, and I think the theme, not just from myself but from some others, and I don't want to speak for anyone, you're all here, you can speak for yourselves, but there was a theme of, the good news is, educationally, I think we're doing good things, we're doing great things, you know, for the kids, you know, educationally. The areas that really need improvement are among personnel, among operations, and, you know, fiscal systems and stuff. But I think we're, parents and students should be happy to know that, yeah, I mean, the district is moving, it's not just us saying it, it's DESI saying it, it's the survey data, it's the tests. Things are really looking up, and I hope that nobody just, like I said, when you say "needs improvement," it sounds like a death sentence, but it shouldn't. It's area for growth, it's area for its opportunity to improve.
Well, I'm happy to hear you say that.
Yeah.
Definitely. And so one of the quotes addressed parent engagement. I just want to say, I have been to so many events at so many schools, I've seen administrators and teachers work so hard to engage parents, to get them there at different events, and they don't, sometimes they do come, but sometimes they don't, and you can't make people show up. So I just want to, that is, I just want to say, I've personally witnessed, you know, the work that goes into these events to try to get parents to come to the high school, to hear about, you know, programs that are offered, and it's really frustrating when you're there and there are three parents in the audience, but there are 50 parents that are going to send their kids somewhere else because they don't want to send them to Wareham High School. That is really frustrating.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to acknowledge, the work is done at all of the schools, that you all do to get parents engaged. That's just a really frustrating piece. So, and I just want to share one last thing that, like I said, I've been doing a lot of research about the evaluation process, and hopefully, we'll continue this conversation. But one really important thing that I read and heard from another chair of a school committee is that the evaluation isn't meant to be punitive, it's meant to be an improvement process.
And that was what I was trying to convey.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Rossi.
Yeah, that was the other thing I wanted to piggyback on, was that, you know, Mike had said that a needs improvement isn't a necessary negative. I think that there are so many strong points in our district, and I think that when Ms. Morgan had brought up some of the changes administratively in some of the schools in the past, I think we have a really good team in place, and we're seeing those improvements in the numbers with the principals and the people that we have in place currently. I don't think that that should be overlooked. I think that you guys have taken great strides in, one, in changing perspective, and, two, in changing, you know, the engagement with the kids, and that's huge, and that's shown. And to Joyce's comment about parental engagement, that was one of my comments. And that is not always, like I said, necessarily the cause. We do know the work that you guys put into these events and these special events and things. I think what's happened historically is that, you know, the kindergarten and the young kids, their parents are excited, their kids are just starting school, and they've gotten to that point, and I think because there's so much of that excitement continuing now, that hopefully, that will continue. But I think what's happened historically is that because of things that had happened prior to who's in charge now, that was lost in translation as the kids got older, and the excitement got less. And those parents started to become more jaded and less involved because of a past perception or their past experience that they were then relaying to other parents. And it's contagious. Negativity is contagious. As sad as we may, as sad as that is, we want to focus on all of the positives because the reason I ran for this committee is because of the positives, because I've kept my kid here, and I believe in the school, I believe in our educators, and I believe that we have this foundation. But one of the biggest issues has been perception, and I think that has carried through those older kids. And I think as long as we can keep the momentum going with where we're at now, we will hopefully see a shift in that parental engagement because they're seeing the changes. The kids are coming home more excited, even in the middle school, in the high school, where, you know, kids start to be teenagers and you get one-word answers. They're starting to be more engaged. There's more things for them to talk about, for them to be involved in, and we are heading in a good direction. So I think that the needs improvement isn't necessarily, I mean, we don't get mad at our kid if they bring home a C. We just know that they need to do a little bit more work in certain areas to get that grade up. And in all of the reports that have been presented by all of these fabulous principals in the room today have, you guys have said, you know where your strengths are. We all know where your strengths are, and we all know, we all have also recognized where our weaknesses are, and that we are working to slowly change them. And I think that it's just, it's a process, and it's a team effort, and it's, there are definitely aspects that have been exemplary and proficient and well-rounded, and it's a matter of weight and numbers that, you know, got us to where we're at. But I do think taking the negativity off of this is hugely important so that we are focusing and remembering what has been done and where we're going, which is in a great direction.
You do understand, though, that this doesn't show that, and I'm going to argue that you've just evaluated every one of us in the way that you've evaluated the superintendent because we're a team, we work together as a unit tirelessly for this district, for the children, for the families, and this is a cumulative effort. She leads us, and we move and do what's best for these children. So I understand your point, and I'm not arguing that you have a right to say what you say, but it is a reflection on all of us. So I just want to make note of that.
Dr. Schwann, respectfully, I think if you read my evaluation, it's very directed toward the superintendent, and I'm very respectful in understanding of the good work that does go on here.
It'd be nice if it was reflected in the overall rating.
Yeah, it would be. Anything else?
I mean, maybe that could be a separate...
What?
...piece, that, I mean, giving the, you know, the positive and also about the team.
Well, so, the evaluation gives plenty of ample opportunity to do that, and if you choose not to do it, you choose not to do it.
Right.
You know, I...
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. But one of the other things, sorry, one of the other things that you're talking about, parents and them leaving, and, yeah, we definitely need to improve there, and that's why I'd asked, you know, if we could look at the return surveys to have a better idea of why they've left. According to the DESI site, another 200 have left since last year.
Okay. Anything further?
No, I guess not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, I had, the next agenda item is school committee budget priorities, and this was interesting. This was a suggestion at the Mass Conference, that, so we have what they call the all-day meeting to go over our budget priorities. The principals come and make their cases and such. But we, as a school committee, like, never do that for ourselves. We never say, you know, we never, I mean, certainly, Ms. Bakayaki and I are on the budget advisory, we can, you know, put our two cents in, but we never meet as a committee and say, "Listen, you know, what do we like to see?" With the caveat being that, you know, we might not get it either, you know what I mean? It's a budget, you know, so if we want, you know, all kinds of things, you know, what I like to say is, with the budget, you know, you're not really, the currency isn't really dollars, the currency is teachers. So if you want something, you know, how many teachers do you want to forego to get it, you know, and that's what it comes down to, unfortunately, too many times. So I'd just like to kick that open to the committee and be curious to know what your thoughts are for next year's budget. Do you guys have any priorities that you'd like to see?
Can I just?
Yeah, Ms. Bakayaki.
So I guess I would say, we did have a budget workshop last year. We met in a workshop meeting to, not to talk about our priorities, but to talk as the budget as a total. So I guess I would go back to what I said before about, we don't have school committee goals, we, you know, agree with the district goals. And so for us, I mean, I appreciate what you're trying to do, is to include everyone in the discussion, but, you know, we had that meeting, we heard what the principals and the central admin had to say about the budget, and for us to say that we want something different...
No, it's not different, but maybe additional. Maybe, you know...
Well, if it's additional, it's different.
Well, it could be what you want.
Right.
But it's school, it's school committee's wish list, I guess, you know, and like I said, with the caveat being, we might not get it either, you know?
Right. Well, then, I guess what I would say is, you know, in the fiscal situation that we know the town is in, to say that we have a wish list, I mean, we're just trying to keep...
The capital plan is a wish list, I mean, but it still needs to get done. So that's where I'm going with this, I mean...
No, and like I say, I appreciate the opportunity, and I get what you're trying to do, and it's just, it's just not, we all know, I think we all know, you know, that we're just not able to...
I disagree with that attitude.
Oh, don't get me wrong. I would like, there's plenty of things that I'd love for us to have that we don't have.
All right, so just let me, I'll lead the discussion. I like to go last because I want to hear from everybody else, but it seems like there's some ambiguity here. So, and there's a reason why I placed this after the superintendent evaluation, because I would like, so, we don't have a business manager right now. We need a business manager. I mean, are we in disagreement with that?
No, we don't.
There you go. So, here we go, awesome, right? So we need a business manager. Hold on, hold on. We don't have a business manager, so...
I'm sorry, but what is the finance operation manager then? What do they do?
Yeah, well, ask the superintendent.
What do they do?
She looks at bills, she looks at different reports, she helps build some reports.
Okay. I just don't know why we need a business manager and a finance operation manager, that's all, I just, we're a small district.
Is that the same as the bookkeeper? Isn't that what they do?
No, we have a bookkeeper.
What?
Is it, it just, is that what the, so if we have a breakdown of the financial, is a business manager, this financial operations manager, in theory, the bookkeeper, how many people in that department, and what are their titles?
Currently, we have a payroll person that oversees payroll. We have two bookkeepers that process bills and warrants, and we have the operations, financial operations person that does other tasks.
And the financial, I forget, does she have a business manager certificate?
She does.
She does, yeah. So, as I was saying, we need a business manager, all right, and you agree.
I do agree.
Okay, so, this isn't hard, you know what I mean?
Well, I guess I, okay, you're right. You're right about that. I was just picturing something different, that's all.
Okay. And so, that said, I mean, it's not a new position, I mean, it's budgeted this year, I want it budgeted next year, I want to start looking now, you know, I don't want to wait because this is how we help the superintendent, it's all on the superintendent's shoulders right now.
I agree, yeah.
So, it's a whole district.
So many hours in the day.
Yeah, come on. So, we need one, all right? And that said, so that was, so...
But that's, so, I was thinking of extra things, so that's what I thought. So, I'm sorry, but priority doesn't mean extra, so you're right.
So, you understand in the discussions we've had as a budget committee that the discussions were going a different way, right? So I want to not let that fall off the plate, and I want that to remain. That's, and they're going to have to vote on this, this is just like a consensus thing, you know what I mean? So, and so, and I apologize, I couldn't make that budget meeting, that was just, that was at 5:30, I was working, still working on this. And, yeah, so, and that said, too, I'd like to put it in everybody's ear, I'd like to have an audit of the school finances. And now, I know the town does it, and we're part of the town, and that gets funneled through there, but there are certain things that, I've actually asked Ms. Morgan to do some research on this, and I'm still learning about it myself, I mean, it may or may not be useful at this time, but I want to put the bug in people's ear that I'd like to see us perform an audit, you know, on our finances, so that we know we're doing things right, and if we're not, get some practices in place that correct it. But the caveat there is, so we know we budgeted for a business manager, for example, but I'm hearing numbers between $12,000 and $60,000 for this, and, you know, could...
For an audit?
For an audit, yeah, and depending on what we want. So, again, is that a teacher? I don't, you know, I don't, do we have, I don't know. But is it something that the town, you know, I think the town has asked for this for a while, you know, and would understand, but when push comes to shove, I don't know if we'll be able to do it, but regardless, I want a business manager. And so do you guys, along those lines, do you guys see anything that you'd like to have added? What do you guys think about an audit?
I think an audit would be a great idea, just to start, whereas we are in between, just to kind of give us a clean slate, make sure that any past practices or anything is clear, kind of start fresh and move forward in a good direction.
Ms. Morgan?
I agree.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Shaverhood, but I think you were open to the idea as well.
Yes, in fact, part of our books were audited recently by the town auditor, or by the auditor that was at the town, and they're, I think they're either just finishing up or just have a few more days. So part of that's already been done. I would suggest, though, that you look at all positions to see the efficiency of positions, to see if we have, no, thank you, if we have people in the right places.
You know, and that might dovetail with what you guys were recommending, right? So, Ms. Morgan and Ms. Bakayaki, do you guys want to get together and come up with some vision of what you thought this subcommittee might be and work together, and I'd be happy to support it?
Sure, sure. That's fine.
All right, great. All right, so, anyone else?
I think we should definitely kind of look at and focus, obviously, we know what the budget is, but kind of look at our transportation budget as a priority with spare buses and things like that to make sure that we are covered, especially coming into bad weather with the, you know, just to kind of make sure that if there is anything, that we do have something in plan for backup, and if there is anything that can be kind of shifted or looked at or prioritized in that regard for student safety, which I know is a priority, I'm not saying that the transportation department does not do this already, but just to put that, if we're looking at certain line items in our current budget to kind of keep on the radar throughout the year, I think that transportation should be one of those, as well as, oh, I just had it in my head, and now it's gone. Like you said, you know, going through the information overload, for sure. I definitely think that that is good, and I definitely agree with Dr. Shaverhood, making sure that, you know, we are utilizing our current staff to the best potential to serve our students. I think that's a great point that she made, and I would agree with that, to, you know, to make sure that we are, you know, utilizing each, whatever skill sets that we have available to us in the most optimal way.
Dr. Schwann? It might be good, if you're looking at that, to also look at where there's overuse, and where you're, because of the finances, there are many people doing many things, and they're wearing a lot of hats, so it might be good to also look at that because that eventually will become inefficient.
Okay, yeah. Do you have my USB thing?
Is that it, right by your hand?
Oh, geez. Thank you, thank you. All right. So I guess while we're still on budget priorities, anything else?
I think maybe when we readdress next meeting the budget line items, we'll all have a more comprehensive idea of things that we may want to focus on instead of trying to draw off the top of our head. That way, we'll have an ability to look at some actual concrete numbers and see if that resonates with anything that we might want to focus on.
Could I just, I think a budget workshop is a, is a good idea. Maybe you would consider that? And it would have to be, you know, sometime in the next month. I'd have to look at the calendar to see, I know our budget presentation is next week, and then the town budget presentation is in December. So it would have to be somewhere in between there.
What's the chronology with the budget? Like, what's the next step?
Next week, we will... Next week, we will present you an overview of the budget, and then the December 4th or something, we will do the open hearing. And then you're going to have to vote for a number.
Okay.
So I guess I think, I don't know, tell me if you agree, that it would be useful if we did that before the town presentation?
Yeah, depending on what that gap is, I don't know how much time there is in between. But, but yeah, I mean, it makes sense. Just, just, just a workshop, really, yeah.
What was the date of the town budget presentation?
I don't think, I don't think she...
It's a school committee meeting.
Yeah.
It's on our schedule.
No, she's talking about...
No, the town one, that you said it was aligning with the town?
It's a school committee meeting, and they all show up.
Okay.
Yeah. That is, so that is true, that's the public hearing.
And that's December, correct? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I don't know exactly the date, but she had, she had the whole chronology. December 12th. December 12th. And mind you, that's not really a school committee meeting, that's a, that's a public hearing, so it's really the public's meeting. And we have to listen to them, we're required to listen to them, whatever they have to So, all right, I'm going to move on. Okay. Any other business?
Could I just, I should have said this under school committee reports, but I just wanted to say that the building committee continues to meet and work hard. The building project is ahead of schedule, so I'm told, unless someone knows otherwise, but that was according to the last meeting, right?
Yeah.
So hopefully, in the near future, we'll hear from the project manager here at a meeting, you know, to give the whole committee an update. But it's really exciting and encouraging, and, yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Morgan?
Since you brought it up, just a question about that. Have they actually contracted with someone to do the actual building?
Nope, that's the next bid that goes out.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure Dr. Shaverhood can tell you more about that.
That's all right. Just curious.
Okay. Oh, I feel bad, Ms. Kote left. I forgot to mention under good news, when I was touring the middle school, boy, the band is really awesome. I think it's, when I, when I happened to pop in, I think it might have been just the fifth grade, and it was, it was like packed, and it's the room right next to, you know, where we used to have our meetings, like, right next to the auditorium. And they had, they'd been at it for three weeks, and they were so good. I mean, like goosebump good, you know? It was like, wow! So I can't wait to see how they've come since then, and I guess they've got a bigger, that was just fifth grade, I think, and there's even more kids between the, you know, sixth and seventh grade, too. So I'm looking forward to that.
I hope that a lot of those kids continue to play going into the high school, because I would love for our high school band to bulk back up, because I remember being in high school and having the band with the football games and the cheerleaders and having all of that, you know, community, you know, togetherness of the different groups of, you know, not only the student athletes, but the musicians kind of working together. And I think, I think that would be really beneficial for the community as well as the kids if they continue to, to keep that liveliness with their music going. So I think that's amazing that they're, they've grown that much in the middle school.
Awesome. All right, without, take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those a favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Pass 400, we're adjourned.